Utilized all our time on that. I appreciate you allowing us a little time to make the adjustment here to our regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting. This is called and convened this evening, July the 23rd, 2024. Having called a meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilman Lee Dumas, if you would, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then an invocation for council. You're welcome to join us by standing.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this night. Thank you that we could all assemble here peacefully and together and discuss the business of your city. Pray for our staff. Pray for those that are serving in higher leadership and levels. There's a lot going on in the country right now. Pray for this country. Pray for the world. Pray for the state. There's so much going on. A lot of people are struggling right now, Lord, and we just want you to be present, be there with them, let them know that you're their guiding hand, their safe harbor. Be with us tonight. Help us do your will always. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
Will be pleased.
With that then, council, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting held on July the 9th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Vanna?
Yes. As we are privileged from time to time to do, we like to take this opportunity to recognize some of our employees for length of service. This is a longstanding tradition and one that this council values very much. As we continue to add new employees, it becomes even more critical that we appreciate those that have been with us for length of service. And we try to do that in a way that offers some recognition in that regard. And we do that with a resolution and certificate, which I will describe here this evening, and those folks that will be part of this evening's recognition. And the resolution reads that it recognizes the City of Greer employees. Whereas the City of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees. Whereas Joe Garu has served in the Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department for five years. Cody Gould has served in the Police Department for five years. Brian Medlin has served in the Police Department for five years. William Westermanster has served in the Police Department for five years. Kathy Hiles has served in the municipal court system for 10 years. Christopher Krajjaka has served in the Police Department for 10 years. Robin Bayuk has served in the Parks and Recreation and Tourism Department for 15 years. And Vicki Adams has served in administration for 20 years. Whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner, now be it therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Greer, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled, wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for their distinguished and dedicated service which they have performed. Be it further resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and an administrative day off with pay approved this 23rd day of July, 2024. I know that we've got some of the employees with us this evening. I'm going to ask Andy Merriman, if he would, to join me in the front for a recognition of those employees.
If you don't want to come up front, we want to convene Joe Garu for his service for five
Did you miss anybody? We got anybody with us? I know if we were kind of keeping an eye out to see if anybody we missed. All right. If we could, give it to him.
Thank you. Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Council departmental reports are contained in your package. You have those. If you need more information or to follow up on anything that you've seen in those reports, you can certainly contact either a department head or Mr. Merriman for assistance in that regard. Ms. Susan Howell joins us tonight for an update on our financial report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to provide you an update as of June 30th, 2024. These are operational results only. There still will be some changes that will be made to the financials for June. We'll have accruals, journal entries, transfers. So just so you know that, the year-to-date revenue was $47,299,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $45,175,000, which is 8% under budget. The cash account in the general fund is $18,911,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $3,739,000, which is 9% above budget. The total expenditures are $5,256,000, and the cash balance in the hospitality fund is $1,033,000. And finally, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1,687,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $1,567,000. So the cash balance in the account is $3,110,000, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Floor is open. Any questions from council? Comments or otherwise? Questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this will be Susan's last presentation to this council for the budget. She is moving on to another opportunity, but I want to thank her for 14 years with the city and all the hard work she has given our finance department and the commitment to this city. So Susan, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, on the departmental reports, I want to remind council again, please review the Fire Department, especially the EMS. Year-to-date, we've had 20 calls that were greater than 30 minutes before EMS arrived on scene, 17 with arrival time of greater than 40 minutes, and a total of 56 calls where we had to provide, and I believe this is ALS for transport. Basically, we were, and Josh can help me out with this, but that's where we are basically taking the place of the folks on the ambulance.
Yes, unfortunately, those numbers grow as you bring it up every month. It's not something that we take lightly either. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. With that then, we have a petitioner this evening. A petitioner comes to us through an ask to appear before council. Council will entertain that information that is brought before us this evening. Typically, we would limit comments or questions, but if something arises, we would do so this evening. But with that then, we will have our petitioner, Terry Sandor, if he would, to come to the podium. At the podium, I would ask that you give your name and address, and we will have it as a matter of record, sir. The floor is yours.
First of all, I'm not accustomed to public speaker. That'll become evident shortly. My name is Terry Sandor. I live at 101 Cornellson Drive here in Greer in the Panorama Farms development. We have a problem at the intersection of Highway 14 and Cornellson Drive. Last October, an automobile failed to yield in the northbound lane and crashed into our facade. Shortly after, I filed a petition under Freedom of Information Act to inquire the number of traffic incidents by the Greer police at this intersection over the last five years. There were eight. Eight. There were four just in the year of 2023 at that intersection. This past January, I contacted Ms. Jessica Jaeger at the South Carolina Department of Transportation, who said my concerns would be forwarded to SCDOT District 3 Traffic Engineering Department with my reference. I never heard back. Well, July 3rd, we had number nine incident. The brick and metal facade at our entrance of a subdivision was running into a motorist traveling northbound on a 14 and was unable to stop or move into the through lane. I followed up with an email to Ms. Jaeger on that day with a picture of the entrance stating that we have yet another incident because she checked on my status of my email. She replied on July 5th with an apology for not getting back to me sooner and stating all signage and roadway markings were properly posted. Fortunately, there were no injuries or residents that were at the stop sign waiting to exit the community. I can only come up with four possible fixes on something like this. I'm looking for help. We've been thinking rubber spikes before Cornellson Drive, possible amber lights around the sign that states 800 feet, the line ends, rumble strips, possible, or as one of the police officers at the site said, maybe that part of Highway 14 should be one lane. Have them change from one lane at Wade Hampton Boulevard. I don't know. Many of the residents of Panorama Farms are understandably concerned that they may be waiting for the next development or an exit to development and become a victim of a careless motorist. Again, I'm looking for help. I have no idea how to proceed, and any help from the council will be appreciated. Notice with the handout I gave you, number three is the incident that happened in October. You notice that that is 10 feet to the right of the incident that just happened this past July, and that means that's going to be further into the lane that people will be exiting the community. If somebody is in that lane, they surely would be in trouble. And I'm just looking for any direction because I'm out of ideas. Apparently, the state is not cooperating. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. In regards to this concern, we can certainly pass it along to our engineering staff. I think they have a relatively good relationship, considering the work that's been going on here recently. We can at least have them inquire and follow up with you if there is any response, but we can at least do that.
I mean, just four in the last year. It's a sign that it's not getting any better the way they come down that 14 and they don't yield. And the ones on the right lane don't know it's really exiting. They need a warning. Just saying.
Thank you, sir.
Again, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Can we do any enforcement, I know it's state road, but during these peak hours? Because I know exactly what, I've seen it 1,000 times. Going north, people come over like they're going to turn into Panorama Farms, but they just use it to pass on the...
It's erased at the one lane, isn't it?
Yes, it is. And maybe if we did some enforcement during the peak hours, of help or not.
I will ask Mr. Merriman if he will follow up with engineering and the PD. How about that?
And that would be great if we would make some suggestions about some things that we would consider locally that would be a good fix for the problem, too. When we talk, instead of looking to them for the solution, let's go ahead and have something in mind when we reach out to them.
I've seen them in the past, and the idea of the amber lights around the perimeter of the sign, like that gets your attention. I'm sure it would. We need something to get the attention of the driver in the right lane.
Well, I would just mention that they didn't see fit to do that on North Main or on Point Set. I don't know why they would do it there.
They gave us an 800-foot sign, but nobody sees it.
No. That's more than the others have.
All right, council, we will move on. The next item before us this evening is Greer Moves, the grant presentation. Reno Deaton, our Economic Development Director, joins us for this. This is an exciting and rapidly growing program that most of you are familiar with, and we appreciate the opportunity to share it with our community this evening, and thank you and your staff and those folks that help you with the Greer Boot Camp to celebrate what the Boot Camp is doing.
Mayor and Council, thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity to have just a couple of minutes on your agenda this evening to really celebrate Greer Moves and entrepreneurship and innovation here in the City of Greer. You are aware that the Greer Moves organization is sort of the remnants of the old Partnership for Tomorrow. That Board of Directors, Board of Trustees, at the transition of the Greer Development Corporation as we moved into the City of Greer, looked at that organization to see what it could become, how it could really help the City of Greer, identified two purposes, as you'll hear a little bit more about this evening, advocating on behalf of the City of Greer and supporting the Boot Camp with a grant program for those Boot Camp graduates to apply for. We've got a number of guests here tonight in council chambers as a result of this announcement. We've got, first and foremost, entrepreneurs and real-life innovators in the audience. We've got companies that are involved in multiple applications of artificial intelligence. We've got an e-motorcycle manufacturer. We've got ag businesses, folks that grow microgreens, folks that are involved in the delivery process with fertilizer and seeds. We've got companies that are developing new products, a HVAC company that's created a new product to help detect mold in your house, a company that creates mats for children in daycare, a company creating shoes for women with lymphedema, a company that creates special services for children in need, and we've got a company that sells the best Christmas trees in the upstate. All part of the Boot Camp, all graduates of the Boot Camp, all applicants, in fact, for this round of the Greer Moves Grant Program. We've also got our consultants with Blue Ink Strategies here in the audience tonight, Johannes Wuchka, Kenneth Fields here. Would you mind standing? Our partners at Blue Ink, we couldn't, of course, do the platform without them. So grateful for them and their partnership. And of course, we've got Philippe Barrow. I'm going to ask him to come on up, who has been instrumental in transitioning the Partnership for Tomorrow into Greer Moves, has really sort of shepherded this process and the grant program to where it is today for a special announcement and presentation.
Before you leave the microphone, let's have the entrepreneurs and the business people that are here to stand for us.
Yeah, please. That'd be fantastic. If you could, please stand.
Wow. Let's give these folks a round of applause. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you so much. My name is Philippe Barrow. My day job is with Michelin, and my night job is with Greer Moves. These two reasons why Greer Moves was created, in the first place, first reasons to advocate for the City of Greer and for projects, especially sustainable projects for the city. But the other reason is to be able to extend, to give seed money to entrepreneurs when they graduate from the Platform of Greer. So nothing would happen without the sponsors would generously donate it to Greer Moves. I want here to recognize BMW, County Bank as well, Michelin, and of course, the City of Greer. I want to recognize also the court team members who are in the room, who help manage Greer Moves. I can see Brooke Renison, also John Curtis, who is not with us today. I see Mark Sheldon, Early, of course, Johannes Wuchka, and Reno, also Nate Hamblin from Red Elm. We all team up to manage the process of working with the Platform of Greer. So why and how does it work? We have a fantastic program here in Greer to promote and encourage entrepreneurship. The flagship program is the Boot Camp. It's two days. You come with an idea of the business that you want to scale, and after two days, you have everything that it takes to scale that business. It's really amazing. I think it's recognized throughout the state, and we see great results out of that program. We also have coaching facilities. The people who graduate can be coached by people who are professionals, and they've scaled their business before, and they get great advice from their coaches. Of course, through the program, they get a lot of exposure through media, social media, to help them grow their business, reach out to customers. Now, the one thing that we didn't have in Greer was a way to finance these programs. You have people who need like the additional $10,000, $15,000 that it takes to get started and to get their business to the next level. So whenever we had these businesses pitch at the end of the Boot Camp, they were saying something like, we really need $10,000 to really, to grow our business. And we just looked at them like, you won, but you're on your own. And so we really wanted to close that loop, so that's what Greer Moves does. It is able now, because of the funding that we get from our donors, to help them with a grant. So this is how it works, and we're really proud that we're now reaching our second campaign. So just want to introduce the winners of our first campaign. I see one hidden in the room today is LaShawn. We gave a $10,000 awards to Chaos Shoes. The CEO, LaShawn Edmonds, is with us today. LaShawn has a company that designs and sells shoes for people with lymphedema, as in swollen feet, and these shoes not only enable them to walk, but they're also like, they look good and they're fashionable. They make us proud. So LaShawn was one of two of our first winners. The other winner was Connie O'Neil from Big Play in a Box. Connie has a subscription business, as in parents subscribe to Big Play in a Box. These boxes come with toys and instructions for parents to connect with their kids while playing. We thought it was an incredible cause, and she was given a $15,000 grant. Now, this is a June campaign, so it's our second campaign so far, and we're really happy that we'll be able to announce the winner today. That's how it works. That's the process, how it unfolds. We open a window for people to apply after the Boot Camp. They've got one month to submit their application. Afterwards, these applications are scored, which enables us to define a winner. We use like really important criteria to score these applications, such as a good understanding of the customer, the customer needs, and making sure that we see a solution that's going to address the problem, as they cover the needs. We look at the founder and how credible they are when leading their business, a credible plan moving forward, and of course, will that company make Greer stronger, right? Will it, how will it serve the community and make us a better and more innovative community? After which the decision is made and eventually communicated. We had $10,000 budget this time for this second campaign. So I'm going to roll the drums because now is the time where we need to announce the winner. Then you won't hear me talking anymore, I promise. I would like to invite Brooke Renison from BMW to the podium to announce the winner. So I will press the button.
Not yet. One second. So first of all, I also wanted to say one thing. So I have, my day job is BMW, but like you said, my night job is also Greer Moves. And so this is the second time, like he was also mentioning, that we're releasing funds, and we've had a good mixture of both first-time submissions as well as new submissions. And so I wanted to encourage everybody, before we put this up, if it's not the winner here tonight, continue to submit because there was great refinement from the first submission into the last one. Continue to set those goals because I think that that's something that we saw a much better description of milestones this time, so we want to make sure that's continued. And with that...
And? We kept you waiting long enough. Here we are.
Performance-enhanced solutions. So Rich, congratulations.
That's a good picture.
And we have this amazing check. Everybody?
To give you.
You guys can keep it. We like Green. It's so good. I think this one will put it up on the wall.
Absolutely.
Don't go far. I'd like to hear just a little bit about your product, about that, your business. Oh, we got it right there. Let's stick with this then.
It's on the screen. So the slide is a bit messy. I apologize for that. The product is incredible. It's actually a special coating that coats fertilizer so that the content can be released in a timely fashion into the soil. It's entirely biosourced and sustainable, and it helps doing away with microplastics. So we really love the product. We also love the fact that it was designed here in our community, manufactured here, but also tested in the community with local farmers. So it's a really, really big win for the Platform of Greer and for Greer. We have enriched and advocated of the Platform of Greer, someone who participates, comes to the event. We also saw a very credible plan to use the grant money to help grow the business and take it to the next stage. So that's why we chose Rich among all the other great applications that we received during this June campaign.
Great.
Thank you very much. There's going to be another grant campaign in October after the October Boot Camp. So Rich's story is also really interesting because he applied the first time and did not, I mean, did not win. And he did it a second time, which is encouraged, put plenty of work into his applications. We got something like much stronger, much more robust, and he won the second time. So to all those entrepreneurs in the room, it's not because you didn't get it this time that you won't get it the second time or third times. He says a lot about entrepreneurship in general, but also about the grit of the people in this community when they apply themselves. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as exciting as that was, are you going to try and match it, Mr. Merriman, with the administrator's report? You going to give away $10,000 tonight?
What I'll do is I'll talk slow so the folks that are in here that may not want to sit through the rest of the meeting can take a step out. So I'll pause my report for those of you that may want to step out.
We'll take just a moment if you want to...
Yeah. That way I don't look bad by comparison.
I just want to, first of all, congratulate our 12 Under All-Stars here in Greer for taking home the 2024 Diamond Youth Baseball Division One Championship. Our team will head to Louisiana soon to represent the city and the state, more importantly the city, in the Dixie Youth Baseball World Series. So congratulations to those young folks for their hard work. Also, you know, one of the things that we do around here that we're very proud of is we have, and y'all know this... we have, and y'all know this, have become a destination for a lot of professional groups to visit our city, see what we're doing, see the things that this council is leading us in. So we were able to host, two weeks ago, and stepped out, the South Carolina Leadership Enhancement and Development Institute, which is part of the SC Parks and Recreation Tourism Group. We hosted 11 folks from all over the state to not only learn a little bit about what we're doing here and what our success is, but actually to participate in some of the things that they would ordinarily not get to participate in, one of which was hanging out with our firefighters, the other was hanging out with our police department using some of our simulation equipment. So proud to host that group. And I do wanna shout out to our good mayor and his better half, or the special guest at the next Platform of Greer, August 1st, will be speaking from 5:30 to 7:00. And just wanna shout out one, two other things. If you've not been to Greer Golf, to play golf, play around, you'll be riding in luxury in our new golf carts, so highly advise you to take advantage of that. And then, you know, if you've not been south of 85 lately on 14, you'll see Pelham Crossing off to the right, across from the Pelham Medical Center. It is opening soon, and if you notice, and that's actually kind of on my way home, there's a lot of new signs popping up over the doors. So that building is populating. So again, I wanna shout out to Reno and his team for facilitating that and filling it up. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Administrator is available for questions. Counsel, let's move to items of old business. We have two before us this evening, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 28-24. Ms. Cotty joins us for this conversation. Any new or additional information in regards to the final reading of ordinance number 28-2024?
Yes. Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 15th and recommended approval.
This comes with a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive. So move.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 29-2024. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by the Spinks Company LLC, located at 150 Lake Place, 8316 Reedville Road, and 2880 Highway 101, by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of CC for said properties. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number 29-2024?
Yes. Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item as well, and also recommended approval.
Comes with a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, of which we have three this evening. The first item before us is the first reading of ordinance number 30-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain properties owned by 5318 Wade Hampton LLC, located on Highland Street from CC to TN. Ms. Cotty joins us for this conversation. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Excuse me, this is a rezoning request for four parcels located... Should've brought my water up here. Four parcels on Highland Street. They are adjacent to the McAllisters property on Wade Hampton Boulevard.
Let's take just a minute and let you go get your water.
I'm so sorry.
No, go ahead and touch, get your water, that's fine. We're in no rush.
I have been in here before, and I've not called for one time all day, and you can just sit in the seat, and then, I don't know if it's the dust, or...
Did you make...
Something to that, man.
So it's drizzling pretty steady out there? I can't tell.
Yeah, sure.
I don't think you could corral anybody.
How many miles that guy ran?
I know, he said it was gonna...
That guy has been running since...
He has, and he's been running hard, too.
He's been running hard. That guy has lapped this place heavenly knows how many times.
What's wrong?
Yeah, kidding.
He's up there in the Reno realm of mileage.
Okay, my apologies, I'm so sorry. So this is a rezoning request for four parcels totaling one acre on Highland Street. It backs up to the McAllisters property that fronts Wade Hampton Boulevard. This property, these four properties were brought in with the McAllisters property in 2005 via annexation. So you can see in this, sorry, this is the zoning map. All of this purple is Corridor Commercial, which is one of our heavier, more intense commercial zoning districts. Our future land use map calls for suburban commercial. And then this is the street view of the current property. Surrounding land uses, again, it does back up to the McAllisters property, which is commercial. However, both properties on either side on Highland Street are residential. Staff recommends approval, and Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 15th, and they also recommended approval.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property, a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening?
He did give me a call earlier tonight, and he had an unforeseen conflict. He did say if you weren't able to get the answers you needed, he would be fine with you tabling until the 13th, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
We'll proceed. With that comes with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion?
So move.
And a second. And a second. Floor is open. Ms. Cotty, I know this to be a fairly well-established neighborhood in that area. Would our future intention be that some of the lines of demarcation be the streets that we see here, or would we anticipate that this commercial zoning might go further back into this area?
I don't believe so. Staff definitely feels like the back portion of this property should be residential. Highland is very much a narrow residential collector street. We think traditional neighborhood is a much better fit than the current Corridor Commercial. It's a significant downzoning and much more appropriate from what it surrounds.
Thank you. Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. First reading of ordinance number 31-2024, an ordinance authorizing the donation of certain personal property of the city of Greer. Mr. Holtheimer, Deputy Fire Chief, joins us for this conversation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We're here tonight asking for permission to donate our old SCBAs. As you know, our equipment is held to standards, and it has to go out of date at certain times. We replaced them in 2021, and we've had the SCBAs that need to be disposed of. So what we're asking to is to be able to donate those to the Dominican, because in the Dominican, they don't have standards they have to follow, and they are able to use that equipment. And the same for the hoses and ladders that we have to have tested. If it fails, then we cannot use it any longer. So we're asking permission to do that through this ordinance.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So motion.
And a second. Floor is open.
How you know when a ladder is out of date?
So they test them, we have to have them tested annually.
Test them for strength?
Yes, they'll lay them flat on a sawhorse and put a weight in the middle of them, and they, it has to hold a certain, it can't bend but a certain amount in a certain amount of time. And when it goes past that limit, they won't certify it any longer.
Or they put a heavier fireman on it.
Do we just ship it there?
So Bullen Springs Fire District, they collect it, and they work with the US Navy once or twice a year to ship it over there. So that's what we're asking permission to do.
Will that ladder be safe for them to use?
Yes, it's perfectly fine ladder, it's just near, it doesn't meet the standards here.
Their standards are a little bit different.
They're smaller. They're smaller.
Don't have as big a buildings.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Last item before us this evening is the first and final reading of resolution number 22-2024. This is a resolution approving the conveyance of city property. Captain Scott Ellis joins us for this discussion. Floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate it. Not talking about ladders tonight for the rest of the evening, we're here to hopefully recognize and celebrate all of the leadership and the accomplishments of Lieutenant Chad Richardson. He's provided over 24 years of service with the city of Greer Police Department, valued member of our community, has really helped develop the agency. He will be resigning effective August the 1st, taking on another law enforcement leadership position within the county of Greenville. We hate to see him go, but we're very proud of him and wish him the best in his future endeavors. General Order 340.1 states that any individual who is retiring with 20 years or more of good service will be issued their service weapon. While Lieutenant Richardson is not retiring, he is resigning and going on to another position. He has over 20 years of outstanding service that I'm sure we all would agree on. So that's the purpose of this resolution tonight.
Thank you, sir. Comes as a request from the police department. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So motion.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Do we have to give him bullets, too?
We'll hold off on that.
Just the one he's been carrying. In his shirt. Yeah. I think Chad deserves it. He sure does. Good guy.
We appreciate Lieutenant Richardson. He's done a good job for the city.
Yeah, he's a really nice guy. I always enjoyed being around Chad. Real friendly when he went to the different neighborhoods and carried out that position. Yeah, he's great. Did a great job.
Thank you very much.
Had to see him go, yeah.
Cops for tots, too. He did a, he was very instrumental in the success of that program, and he will be sorely missed.
Absolutely.
Friendly guy.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have no items for executive session this evening. Stand adjourned.